I'd like to call the March 9, 2016, meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission to order. All members are present. Would everybody please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just as for all.
Steph, if you would please introduce yourself.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
I'm O'Neil Parenton. I'm here tonight as the parish attorney, but I'm sitting in for Cody Martin, who normally does this. He's out of town.
Lance Brock, zoning official, interim planning director.
Ben Moran, planner.
Levine Boucheval Building Official.
Rhonda Bro, engineering.
Bob Turner, engineering.
Thank you, Steph. We'll move on to item five in the agenda, the chairman's comments. I have just a few comments. I want to welcome our new commissioners tonight, who will be sworn in in just a minute. We welcome you to the commission. We have a big change from our last meeting and the meeting in January, and I will say to all of you, if you need any help, my door is always open as you transition on to this panel, and we're very excited to have you here as well. Also, I want to recognize our new planning, interim planning director, Mr. Lance Brock, is here with us tonight. Thank you, Lance, for being here. All right, moving on to item number six, general business first, swearing in of the new commissioners. Mr. Parenton.
Yes, all the new commissioners will stand. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or averter that your duties as a member of Ascension Parish Planning Commission and do in so agree to follow the Constitution of the United States, Louisiana Constitution, laws of the state of Louisiana, and the ordinance, rules, and regulations of Ascension Parish?
I do.
You do.
All right, and before we move on to item number seven, I do want to recognize that Councilman Doc Saturday is here with us in the back, and Councilman Bill Dawson is here. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here with us tonight. Also, I thought I saw Ken Dawson here earlier tonight, earlier, but I don't see him in the room right here, but I know he's here with the parish president's office. All right, moving on to item number seven, 7A, approval or denial of the minutes of the February 10, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion on that?
I still move.
Moved by Mr. Bishop. Does he need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chasson. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. 7B, approval or denial of the minutes of the February 10, 2016 Joint Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Need a motion?
I still move.
Moved by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dumas. Any opposition to that? Hearing none, we'll move on to number eight, item eight, the consent agenda.
I move that we approve all the items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Bishop.
I had a quick question about one.
Okay.
I note, B, it looked like there's two mortgagees listed on the application, but there's only a letter for one of the mortgages. Is everything squared away on that?
If they don't respond, they give up their right to respond.
But they have to be notified, right?
Yes, they remember.
Okay. Well, like if, I guess, and just from my, the application or affidavit says there's two, there's Chase and there's Whitney, there's only a letter to Whitney attached. So I guess, I just want to make sure Chase was notified and everything's in order before you...
That would mean that we got a letter back from them.
Okay.
With no issue, so that that, one of the letters was left off.
All right. Do we have a second for Mr. Bishop's motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chasson. We'll do this by voting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to item nine, public hearing to approve or deny the following preliminary plats, 9A Riverton, quality engineering and surveying. Mr. Murphy, I think, or is someone here on, oh, Mr. Byrger.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, new members of the commission. We're here to ask for approval of a preliminary plat of Riverton. It's off of Highway 22 in Dara. It's 748 lots. It used to be zoned as a TND, traditional neighborhood development, with over 1,200 lots approved. We went to the full council, asked to rezone to a medium intensity residential and reduced. I think we got rid of maybe around 200,000 or 300,000 square foot of commercial also, and reduced the size of this a lot. And now we're here to ask for approval. Couple things, you know, you hear a lot about traffic impact fees right now through the council. They're discussing impact fees. So the owner of the property has got with the administration and some council members, negotiated a voluntary traffic impact fee on the site. That fee has been negotiated to $1,000 a lot. And also in the negotiations, if the council decides to pass an impact fee, and if those fees are actually higher than the $1,000 per lot fee, then that particular ordinance would trump the, if y'all would so choose to allow the agreement of the $1,000 per lot, then the new ordinance would trump that, and the developer would agree to go to the increased, I mean, the adopted ordinance by the council. So we're not trying to circumvent a new, maybe coming ordinance. We're just saying we're volunteering $1,000, and if the council decides they're going to pass one, then we'll abide by the new. So with that, we'll answer any comments or...
What's the initial phase one? How many lots are going to be in the initial phase?
Our phasing plan, deck 78.
First file is 53.
77.
What's that?
77?
77, that's correct. You've got 53 foot lots, yes. Oh, 50. Okay, 77.
So how many different phases are y'all going to have with this?
10.
And how long is that going to take?
We're estimating right, we're estimating right now 10 years. Of course, market will drive that timeline, but we're estimating one filing a year for 10 years.
Staff comments?
As far as the plat, the layout of the subdivision, the lot sizes, the park area, everything, that all meets code. The big issues in reviewing it was traffic. I know, also with drainage, I think Rhonda has, is not satisfied with the drainage impact study, but she'll advise you on all that. But the layout of the plat all meets code. The only thing, if you guys accept their offer for impact fee, whatever it is, I would like a note added to the plat saying, whatever it is that you guys decide on, that, and additionally, we have a sewer impact fee, and I think that note should also be included on this plat, that they will pay the required amount.
Is the $1,000 that y'all are offering to pay, is that for just traffic, or is that for traffic and sewers as well?
That is just traffic. I think the parish already has an existing ordinance that you can't circumvent. It's an ordinance, existing ordinance.
They're going to pay the $2,500 per lot.
Just for public information, what is the sewer impact fee, the dollar amount, Ben?
$2,500 a lot.
Engineering staff, do y'all want to comment on this?
Yes. I reviewed the traffic impact study. I think maybe some confusion on my comments, because I recommended denial primarily because the traffic impact study didn't tell me what the phases were. And so when I looked at it, I looked at it generating 7,000 vehicles a day on the road system out there.
That's based on all 10 lots being built out?
Yeah, based on all of them. Plus, it's also based on the buildout of the other subdivisions in the vicinity. There are a number of subdivisions along 44, LA 44, in this vicinity, that are in different stages of being either completed, planned, or proposed for construction. And so they incorporated all of those traffic volumes. And so when you do that, the traffic volumes on 44 becomes approximately 20,000 vehicles a day. And so that is beyond the scope of a two-lane road, so clearly that needs to be four-lane. And also, the intersection of 22 and 44 is, would be level of service F. So I noted all of those, which the traffic impact study also noted all of those. Clearly, I did not intend to interpret that this subdivision should pay for those improvements. All I said was that, in order to have a full buildout, at least some or all of these other improvements should be there, so the road is capable of handling the traffics being generated. Phase one, which I learned about just today, at 77 lots, is not a concern to me. That, I'm okay, and actually, the state, since it'll be the entrance onto LA 22, the state will dictate what they would have to do at that intersection, whether they have to put in a left turn lane or a right turn lane at, with that volume so generated by 77 lots. Only if they go to the 780 lots, do I have a real concern about other improvements not being there, because it'll definitely throw the road system, it'll lower the level of service both on 22 and 44, and even at the ramp intersections at I-10. So it does affect a lot with full buildout. 77 lots is not that big a deal, and the state will dictate what they would do.
How many phases do they get to where it starts becoming a concern?
Pardon?
What phases will they get to? I mean, one is not a problem, 10 is a problem. Where does the problem start? How many years down the road are we looking for?
I would want to see probably some improvements on the road system, start at probably phase three. They will definitely have to deal with turn lanes on 22 at stage two, probably. Pardon?
The roundabout you see at the front of the entrance of 22 is to be constructed at the 95th lot, which would be in the second phase.
Oh, okay.
Second filing.
Okay. If they construct a roundabout at that location, roundabouts are great for promoting traffic efficiency. It would actually increase the level of service from what it is out there today. It would be basically a level of service A at that point, but I didn't have in here phase staging of the improvements.
Ms. Rhonda?
We've already been through one round of comments, and this is with the abbreviated drainage review. And on the second review, I still had some issues with their flow patterns. I have not sent comments out yet, because I just finished it today. I had some issues with their flow patterns. My biggest issue is that they're trying to, they have to prove that they're reducing the flow, and they're trying to prove that off of their property. They need to prove it on their property. So I can't take it, if they're next, if they're not reducing the flow and they're flowing it on to their next-door neighbor's property, that's still an issue. And the BFE still hadn't been verified. I heard that it was, but I wasn't told. And then the watershed still hadn't been verified. So those are still issues with their drainage.
So if it gets approved tonight, it has to be contingent on getting those issues resolved?
Yeah.
Does it, any commissioners have any questions for the, for the staff?
I was curious with the $1,000 impact fee that they're adding, has anybody added that up to find out if that's going to actually be sufficient to make the changes that are required to rise it to a level of service A?
For me, I don't think any development, I mean, I...
Impact fees are not, impact fees are required to maintain it as it is. You cannot use impact fees to require them to improve service.
Okay.
And generally speaking, impact fees across the country are really to address the value of the impact, and generally, they serve as seed money for other monies. You couldn't possibly put the burden of that on a lot. It wouldn't, mathematically, it would never work.
We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Is there, Stacy, is there anybody signed up to speak?
Jeff Pettit.
Mr. Pettit, come forward. And before you start, I just want to make a comment that there's a three-minute time limit, so everybody who wants to speak will get their opportunity. Please respect the three-minute time limit on this. Also, before you start, Mr. Pettit, I do want to recognize that our parish president, Kenny Metassa, has come in. Thank you for being here tonight. Mr. Pettit, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I have a concern about this development. Mr. Horner said he just learned today there were 77 lots in the first filing. As I understand, the way filings are supposed to be done, they're supposed to be complete when they're turned in. And to get on this agenda, if he just learned it today, how did this get on the agenda That's a question I have. That's one. I have a concern about the traffic studies and the drainage studies not being completed prior to submission. The law requires that an application for a preliminary plat be complete when it's turned in, and give staff adequate time to review and study. I don't think learning today that 77 lots is in the first filing is adequate time to come to a meeting tonight to review this proposal. I don't understand that. I'm hoping I can get some enlightenment. I might be confused totally, but I don't believe I am. From what I understand, staff has recommended denial of this plat, based on the impact it will have on the health, safety, and welfare of our community. And we're all members of that community. So I would ask y'all to seriously consider either asking quality engineering to pull it out, pull it back, have further review, give our staff time to adequately review, and let the two of them come to an agreement to where it won't impact the neighboring property owners and the people traveling on the roads. They're going to be impacted. We all know this. So let's come up with a better plan, would be my suggestion to y'all to consider. I'm not trying to tell anybody what to do, but just to consider it. The other thing I have a huge problem with, and this is on a personal note, and Mr. Pryor, if I'm out of order, just tell me, and I'll sit down, but I have a problem with engineers and developers meeting with y'all in the back room, but the public can't come back there prior to a meeting. The appearance, the possible appearance of impropriety and backdoor deals is there. That perception could be there. So I would say, if they can come back there before a meeting, then let everybody come back there. I think that's more than fair, and it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. I will say, I don't think anybody was meeting with any of the commissioners. I think there was, trying to work out the issues with, that the engineering staff was noting. Next person?
Bill Dawson.
Councilman Dawson. Also want to recognize that Councilman John Cagnolati has joined us. Thank you for being here, Mr. Cagnolati.
Well, thank you. I'm Bill Dawson. I represent District 2, which is where this development is proposed to be. First, I wanted to take a minute and welcome the new commissioners, and welcome back the two old ones. I didn't mean that, Morris. But, you know, it's probably the most difficult job that we have in the parish for a volunteer, and I want to appreciate you guys putting yourself out here. As a friend of mine says, getting in the ring with the bull. So not many people are willing to do that, and I appreciate it myself. You know, I'm fairly new to the position that I'm in, and so six months ago, I was out there campaigning myself. What we heard out there, what I heard fairly clearly was, one, there's a traffic issue. Of course, nobody had to tell me that, because I live on 44 or close to 44. Secondly, that, you know, we need to, we need to have impact fees, so that developers of these subdivisions offset their, or mitigate their problems. So as, we took that as one of our priorities when we came on to the council, and knew some of the new ones, additionally, some of the existing ones. So I put that as one of my priorities. And so here on the council, we are moving forward with that. As you may know, strategic planning chaired by Councilman Saturday. We moved forward a few weeks ago, a proposal to the council to institute a moratorium, if necessary, in order to institute impact fees. Secondly, the finance committee this week passed on to the full council after a 30-day review by the administration, a proposal on impact fees. So in light of all of this, this week, I was called to a meeting between the developers and administration relative to this subdivision. You know, during that meeting, there were offers and counteroffers, but where we landed is what Mr. Byrger enumerated to you guys, that they're going to pay an impact fee, $1,000 at least, minimum impact fee. If the council institutes impact fees, that number will replace that $1,000, if it's higher. So if you look at the math, simply, it's $780,000 for the 780 lots. The proposal that we sent, the average was $1,900 a lot. So, you know, if you do the math on that, it's about a million and a half dollars. So, you know, well, this is, this is a pathway that I understood that my constituents wanted to go, and that's the pathway that we're moving in. So as Mr. Horner said, you know, we don't expect them to build a complete roundabout at $4 million, but we get a million and a half dollars from this developer, and a million from another developer. But, you know, we're moving towards making the changes that are necessary to address the problems that we have in the parish. So I would like for you guys to just take that into consideration as you counsel over this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Catherine Goppel.
I'm just trying to, and I don't know, maybe I missed my opportunity to ask this, but I'm just trying to figure out, because there was some discussion about a roundabout being built after 93.
Two different roundabouts.
Okay.
One in front of the subdivision, and one that would be at 44 and 22.
The one at 44 and 22 is already in the plan, isn't it?
No, it's the one at the entrance of the subdivision. It's in the plan.
There are a number of considerations that I've been aware of. For example, along with the city of Gonzalez, improvements on 44, and the intersection, I'm sure is on a plan, but to my knowledge, none of it's funded. And so until there's funding, all you've got is a desire. You don't have a project.
On the roundabout at the entrance of the subdivision, though, that's part of the developer's going to put that in.
That's, that would be...
After, at lot 93.
That's correct.
And that's in addition to the impact, to the, or whatever fee you want to call it, the $1,000 y'all talking about, that's, they're going to put in the roundabout and pay the $1,000 per lot. So those are two different issues.
The impact fees are for off-site improvements.
Okay. That's, that's what I was just trying to clear.
It's separate, they're going to pay the impact fee and with the roundabout at the entrance of the subdivision. Ms. Goppel, floor is yours, ma'am.
Yes, impact fees haven't been passed yet, so that's like an ultra-viree act we're talking about. You have before you the consideration of 780 homes on 260 acres. This is according to paperwork, with another 148 acres and 444 homes off of Highway 22, about one mile west of Highway 44, approximately three homes per acre, with 20.3 acres of green space. According to the Neil Schaefer Traffic Impact Study, Riverton will add 7,000 vehicles per day at buildout, an increase in delay times from 27.2 to 206.4 seconds, and reduces the level of service on LA 22 from D to an F. A roundabout is recommended at the proposed entrance at 22, in lieu of the turn lanes recommended on the plat right now. Staff recommends denial of the, as the traffic impact study has not been approved. Items were mentioned but not addressed in your paperwork. This is not a complete list. The need for 11 to 15 acres for a school site in the next five to 10 years in the area. No verification from the Corps of Engineers on base flood elevation, no verification of watershed, required cut and fill volumes and profiles for drainage. Subdivision should be required to participate in future costs to widen LA 22 from LA 44 to the railroad tracks. No consideration of additional traffic growth is considered, even though considerable open land exists that could be developed in the near future. There's no timeline provided for buildout. In managing growth principle 2, page 5 of the master plan, which is the law in our parish states, encourage growth only in areas of the parish which can support it with adequate soils, drainage, and infrastructure. There are at least three reasons to deny this approval. One, this development as presented lacks adequate physical infrastructure to support it, according to professional engineers. Two, the application is incomplete, as several items of concern have not been adequately addressed in the application as required by ordinance. And three, staff recommended to deny. I see only one reason to approve mentioned nowhere in the code, pressure from developers. Follow the recommendations of the professionals and the code. Require the developer to complete deficient items and address concerns before approval. This is your first decision, gentlemen, and you will set the tone the rest of the tenure. I ask that these comments be placed in the public record for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goppel. Anyone else? All right. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing regarding this matter. Commissioners, do y'all have any comments or questions? Mr. Byrger, do you want to address some of those things?
Yes, just a couple of clarifications. As far as just finding out about the 77 lots tonight, it does state on the plat that we actually turn in as a packet for staff review and for y'all's review. I think you can see that where we do have a breakdown of the filings, I think what Mr. Turner was saying, in the actual traffic study, it didn't break out filings. It did a traffic study on 748 lots. As far as drainage, we did a drainage study on the, I mean, excuse me, 780 lots, not 40 lots. The traffic study was done on the entire site. It is a complete study. Again, we heard tonight that there are some additional comments on, a second round of comments, which we just heard tonight, that we didn't have a chance to address, and we're asking for approval contingent on us addressing those few comments that were made as far as the base flood elevation, which we did meet with some of the staff, which they're not here to confirm, for Ms. Bro, that we did agree on a base flood elevation today, and some, the couple of the issues. And we have worked with staff and traffic concerns. We're willing to pay impact fees to address some of the traffic concerns, and we just asked for approval contingent upon the comments being addressed for the traffic study. Thank you.
Mr. Bob, if we heard from Ms. Rhonda that if we have to, if we approve this tonight, it has to be contingent on passing a drainage study, is there, is there any traffic issues that, if it gets approved tonight, that would need to be contingent on?
The only thing I would be concerned about, if you go beyond what they consider to be the first phase, the 77 lots or whatever, I'd like to see in the motion for approval or whatever, that it says something to the effect, they can't go beyond a certain level before these other improvements have to be done. I'm not asking them to do them. I want to be very clear about that. The improvements that were set out in the traffic study probably range from $50 to $100 million. So it's very extensive for this area, but what I don't want them to do is to have a free rein to continue down the development road without some of these other improvements being done. So at some point, there needs to be a cutoff limit as to how far they can go before other things happen.
And you think that's somewhere between the second and third phase?
That's my feeling, yes. That's my feeling, yes.
Commissioners, do y'all have any comments, questions? Yeah, yeah, sure.
Nick Felito with Neil Schaefer, we're the firm that performed the traffic impact study. I'd like to make a clarification on the way the study was performed and the phases. We did look at it in phases, but the phases we utilized were from an early plat that had four additional, had four original phases. And so, that's how we did the study. So, our Phase One equals Phases One, Two, and about fifty percent of Phase Three of the, of the plat. So, that's roughly about two hundred and thirteen lots is what our Phase One is. And then, we also did a Phase Two, which was another two hundred and thirteen, a Phase Three, and then a full buildout for Phase Four. I want to clarify that, that.
So, you have it in four phases, but ten filings, I think, is, is what the plat shows.
That's right. And we provided the staff with, you know, a equivalent of our Phase One equals this many phases or filings from the plat. It kind of breaks that down.
And I guess to be clear on that, so our language doesn't get mixed up, Mr. Bob, you're talking about the infrastructure needs coming between the second and third filing or somewhere in there, as opposed to phases, which was a term I was using. I don't want to mix those terms up.
I want to be sure that I'm not misinterpreting what you're asking. I had, I'll be honest with you, I, I looked at this as the entire subdivision, seven hundred and eighty lots. So, I was not prepared to give an opinion as to Phase One, Phase Two, or Phase Three. Certain things might have to happen. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable if we go much beyond a, a Phase Three of the ten-phase developments. If.
So, if it's, it's roughly seventy, seventy-something houses, lots per filing?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make something perfectly clear.
I want to get this clarified, just so we're, it's roughly seventy.
There's seventy-seven lots in the first filing, second filing's ninety-one lots. They vary depending on the plat, but basically, it's somewhere around seventy to ninety lots per filing.
So, somewhere around two hundred and sixty lots is where you're going to have, start having concerns on traffic.
Yeah, once you get over a hundred vehicles per hour in the peak hour, that's the point at which you need to be talking about improvements. And at seventy-seven lots, you're okay. Now, when you get above a hundred to a hundred and ten lots, you're approaching that hundred vehicles per hour limit as to where improvements ought to be imposed. So, that, that's kind of a, a rule of thumb. And maybe Nick can speak to that in more detail as to what would be a, a proper threshold for dictating improvements.
Did I not understand a minute ago that at, at the ninety-fifth lot, that the, the, the circle, the roundabout, has to be built?
Yes, sir. The roundabout coming into the development off of LA twenty-two has to be built prior to the final plat of the second filing.
Okay, so, so you got a roundabout. Did I not, I must understand you earlier when you said that once that roundabout is going to alleviate a lot of traffic flow in that area?
Would, would you repeat that, please, for me?
Well, so, I understood earlier that this roundabout had to be built with the ninety-fifth lot in that we also, unless I misunderstood, once this roundabout built, it's going to facilitate a lot of traffic flow. It's going to improve, make, make a huge improvement.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So, so we have a, we have a roundabout. If I, if I understand this right, we have a round number, two-hundred lot range, where the traffic really starts hurting bad. And, and, but the roundabout's going to be built by lot ninety-five.
Yes. The only, the only condition, or the only thing I'd like to point out to you is that the roundabout is for the entrance of the subdivision onto twenty-two.
Correct.
The traffic that's generated by the subdivision is going to affect the intersection of forty-four and twenty-two.
Absolutely.
All the way up to I-ten. So, while we might say that the traffic will be okay at the subdivision, we may throw the intersection of twenty-two and forty-four to an F. It could be a, a level of service F. It's very low now.
And I think what you're trying to say, Mr. Bob, is that you want to see, before we move past the ninety-fifth lot or the hundredth lot, whatever it is, there needs to be the other infrastructure improvements in the area, which aren't necessarily the responsibility of the developer, but they need to be in place before you can move past that lot. Is that?
That, that's correct. In, in effect, that I'm trying to make sure we don't develop this full subdivision until other improvements are made that's capable of handling it. Now, clearly, the, this developer is not required to, to do those other developments or other improvements, but maybe reasonable to participate in some of them. The traffic study indicated that there would be roundabouts needed at, at the ramps of I-ten and forty-four. That's quite a ways away from this subdivision. But it generates traffic that goes to that location, so it's affecting that. So, there, it, it's not just the entrance to forty, or twenty-two that I'm concerned about when you start getting this much traffic on the road.
Mr. Branton.
Yes, if you, if we pass an impact fee ordinance, they will pay the impact fee. That will be their requirement. They'll have to do, they're requi, they're in and out, but they will pay the impact fee. They're not, you know, you can't place conditions on them to do other things outside the development if we pass impact fees. So, if you make any contingencies, it'd have to be, if we pass an impact fee, that's, that, that meets, that meets their requirements.
But if we don't, they voluntarily accepted it.
Right, right.
Let me, let me ask you one more question.
I just want to understand, we can't approve it subject to construction halting after lot number ninety-five, waiting for more infrastructure development? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is this, you can make your approval, but if we pass impact fees, if you, if you place any conditions on them to do any off-site improvements, then the impact fee ordinance is going to override that.
But what about, it sounds like what he's, I forget, was it Mr. Bob, was that your name? I'm sorry. The hazard of being new, I guess. But what I think he's saying is, the other intersections further down that are going to be impacted by the additional seven thousand vehicles a day, since the infrastructure can't handle those vehicles that build out, putting, am I understanding you right? Like a cap, you can't go beyond a hundred or a hundred and ten lots until there's a roundabout at the intersection of forty-four and twenty-two. And then, you can't go past two hundred lots. Not that necessarily the developer has to build it, but that their, I guess, progress in the subdivision is halted until those other off-site developments or improvements are made by whoever they're made? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I, I think that's a good summary of my concern, yes.
Well, the problem is going to be if you pass an impact fee ordinance, it's going to cover that. You're not going to hold people up if they pay their impact fees. It's going to be, that's their responsibility.
So, we're going to get superseded by the impact fee if it passes.
Right.
Mr. Murphy, you wanted to address that?
Couple of things. One is, the voluntary impact fee is coming right from the get-go, the thou, the thousand. You know, you got, you got an impact fee ordinance that may, may not be coming. You have a, a voluntary impact fee immediately coming. Well, that is for off-site type improvements. Second, these roads are, are state highways. They're going to be, we still have to go through the state permitting process. We still have to go through, they're going to regulate what we need to do and what improvements need to be done prior to certain things on their roads. LA twenty-two, LA forty-four, all that's state roads. Nick Felito, or Neil Schaefer, is already contracted to do stage zero studies on those corridors. Corridor, full corridor studies for Highway forty-four. The parish is also doing some studies in that area. There are some improvements coming. Now, we can't dictate or we can't predict the timeline. There's other developments in the area that's already committed to do some developments or some plans and, and do some things. No one can predict that time. I, I can tell you that. But I can tell you, the DOTD watches these roads very closely. I can tell you, there's some improvement that's going to be made, whether it's predicated by us as part of our, our, I guess, our permit to tie into LA twenty-two or something, and, and that kind. So, there are some improvements that are coming. Like Ms. Bob said, nobody has a crystal ball knowing exactly when they're coming. And so, but that's the whole reason from the get-go, is coming up, look, you know, it is not, it is not mandated. It is not required today. We do know there's some issues. We know that it's bigger than us trying to come in there and, 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 I guess, spend the millions that it's going to take probably to do that, but we can participate. We're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of seven eighty, seven hundred and eighty thousand, pretty much guaranteed, versus if, depending on the impact fee, if it stands as it is today, somewhere around, like Mr. Councilman Dawson said, one point five million dollars. That is a contribution, whether it's a match for state, federal funds, whether it's a roundabout, whether, whatever the state or the parish sees fit to use with that money. And that's, that's what we, we're here to say. That, 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 that's why we're offering that, is to try to get those improvements done.
And, and I guess what I'm, if I'm understanding what, what Mr. Bob's saying is, maybe trying to control the growth to match the infrastructure capacity? So, is, is that what you're saying? So, like, in other words, as the, you know, kind of limit the amount of lots that can be built to how much the roads can handle, not that necessarily you or the developer, whoever, has to pay for those improvements, but say, you know, if the roads can only handle an additional two thousand cars before everybody's waiting thirty minutes to get through the intersection, then let's just put however many lots will do two thousand. And then, whenever the additional, I guess, capacity is built on those roads, then move forward. I don't even know if we can do that. But it sounds like that's what, what you're saying. And I'm just trying, I guess, to get clarification.
That, that's my concern. This subdivision, when it's built out, is going to generate a lot of traffic. And my concern is that somehow this phasing of development be geared to the ability of the road system to handle it. If we have no limit and they go ahead and build out seven hundred and eighty lots, you're going to throw that whole area into gridlock because the roads can't handle it. And so, there needs to be some sort of check and balance on the ability of the roads to carry the development as it occurs. That's all I'm saying. I'm not dictating how it's to be done or who's to pay for it, but I'm, I'm saying that it needs, needs to be a balance. The, the fact that there are planned improvements on forty-four and planned improvements at a number of other subdivisions, including roundabouts, onto forty-four, that's all well and good. But at the same time, those need to be constructed in order to actually handle the traffic that would be generated. It's one thing to say we planned to do it, and it, and I'm, I'm putting words in their mouth that it's being planned. It's another thing for it to actually be constructed.
One, one thing I, I'd like to point out also as part of, part of this traffic study is required by, by the parish is this traffic study included a lot of assumptions. It included assumptions based on other projects that this commission approved in this area and the city of Gonzalez as well. It, it, it assumed when those other developments would happen to be online, that's how they constituted the growth. So, when you start projecting this out ten years, it also includes all those other developments. And some of those have made commitments and, and, uh, uh, impact fee voluntary or otherwise, commitments to do certain improvements as well. That's not part of the study. And so, we, we're getting their growth, but we're not getting the benefits of what they're planning on doing as well. So, even though we're looking at the corridor, one thing I'll need to look at is, you know, we were, let's take one for example. Inborn, uh, there's a, there's a development inborn that's approved. However, we had to show the trips, but we didn't show the improvements that has to be done before that development can happen, which is a roundabout or something, or a light or something like that along forty-four. There's another project, Conway Plantation, that, that we had to show the trips, but there's also going to be roundabouts built as part of that development that's not in the study. So, there's things like that. There's, there's, there's the growth, there's the traffic, and we know, and we know there's traffic on forty-four, but that's things that need to be considered as well. We could, we did not go in and say those improvements. So, all we looked at over for ten-year period is growth, is what's coming on the roads, but not the improvements that had to be done with those that are already in place. So, keep that in mind also.
Any other comments by commissioners?
I think the applicant wants to speak.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of comments I want to make. One of them, everything that's been said so far is why maybe we shouldn't, or maybe we should delay. And I'm going to give you a few numbers of why we should in order to address the issues that we're talking about, why we shouldn't. This, these are numbers per house, roughly. There's about sixty thousand dollars worth of material to go into one house. Fifty-four hundred dollars in sales tax on that. Subcontracts is about a hundred and nine thousand dollars per house. Of that number, there's about fifty thousand dollars in material, again, which is about forty-five hundred dollars in taxes. Wages, there's about fifty-nine thousand dollars in wages that are paid per house, again. And of that fifty-nine thousand dollars, by the time it's depleted and it's spent in the parish, about thirty percent of that goes to taxes, somewhere along the way, cigarettes, beer, gas, automobiles, everything, groceries, everything that you use. That comes to another eighteen thousand dollars per house, okay? So, per house, you've created twenty-eight thousand dollars in taxes. That comes, not all to the parish, but it goes to the state. We're talking about state highways. That's how they pay for their highways, by taxes that they collect, okay? So, over the ten-year period, the seventy-eight lots is going to create, well, per year, let me take that back. Per year, the seventy-eight lots creates two million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars taxes, all for the numbers that I have. Over the ten years, that's twenty-one million, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in taxes, okay? And if you add the cost of living to it, which is, they're going to go over the ten years. I just used the flat number. Over the ten years, you're going to add another three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars in taxes. So, that goes to roughly twenty-eight million dollars. So, you multiply that time ten, gets you the number of tax dollars that you collect over those ten years. Pretty big number. So, you'd have a lot of money that's coming into this area that's going to be spent here to address these issues that are being brought up. So, I just wanted to talk about some of the, some of the positives. The total of this project's about a hundred and eighty million dollars that'll be turned over, over the ten-year period. Equivalent to some of the good-sized plants out there with no tax exemptions, where you do a plant, you give them a ten-year tax exemption. We're not getting that in this project, and I thank you guys for listening.
Any more, any other comments by the commissioners, any questions?
I just want to state my concern. I mean, obviously, the, you know, if I'm reading my packet right, the thing without which not the staff recommended denial was the traffic issue and this extra thousand dollars per lot would have been nice to know before the meeting. Because obviously, that plays an impact, especially if it's going to pay, as I understand it, almost a quarter of, at least offset a quarter of the, the cost of improving the level of service in that area. So, you know, in the future, I would like to be advised of this before the meeting, especially if they're having these meetings, to address these issues since that seems to be the, the important factor for approval or denial.
I, I just want to let you know how it works. I put the packets together a week ago. They come out, today's March ninth, it's seven days ago. So, the Wednesday before, I put the packets together. Stacy distributes them to you guys and uploads them on.
No, I, I'm just saying, there's a number of questions, obviously, that, that come from that. You know, how much, you know, they've addressed them here, I think, adequately, but I just, I'm saying that obviously, that's something that, that, that weighs into the consideration heavily since the very basis for denial is the traffic issue. So, if that can not, if, if, if the concerns can not only be addressed but actually be improved, that would change a lot of people's opinion, I would imagine, about the, about the development. So, that's, that, I just wanted to say that piece and leave it at that, so.
I have one quick question, staff, I may.
Absolutely.
As the phases come in, are they not required to provide an updated traffic report? As the filings come in on, you know, for final plat, do they not have to update the traffic report?
If, if there is some missing information on the traffic report that comes to our attention, they would, they would, they would do that. However, this traffic report addresses seven hundred and eighty lots. It addresses all of them. And so, I'm not sure, the only thing they would do to update it would be to better explain the phasing and the number of lots in each phase and what improvements that they would recommend per phase. That, that's not in here. But that'd be the only thing I could see.
This body, they wouldn't have to come back and revise a tra, submit a revised traffic impact study unless y'all made that part of the condition of approval.
You have a question?
Yeah, how do these, I know y'all talked about some contingencies. How do they work, like? Yeah, how do these, I know y'all talked about some contingencies. How do they work, like, on drainage? They said there was an issue about reduced flow or not reduced flow.
If we if we pass the contingent to, they would have to get approval from Ms. Rhonda and the and the drainage staff before they could move forward with the subdivision.
So what happens if they don't agree?
Then it won't move forward. They'd have to meet that contingency first.
So it doesn't come back to us? It'd be, okay.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
The only thing I'd want to add is that there was also an issue about the school board carving out some land. It didn't seem to be that that was adequately addressed. I don't know if the developer wanted to address that. But there was some, there was obviously a question about it. It looked like there was a, from what I see, some emails to Chad Lynch, and he still had some questions about whether it was still an option. I was just wondering if that, where do they stand on that?
We have had some discussion with the school board. It's actually not a requirement in the code. It was just a comment by staff. A project this size, it is good to have discussion with the school board. We do agree, and we have had discussion. There is some continued discussion. There isn't anything in in any agreements or anything. There there is some discussion.
It at least remains a possibility.
I believe it was confirmed. I I think you 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 see some emails or you just spoke of some emails with Chad Lynch. There is discussion with the school board, but that's all there is, is discussion. There isn't anything other than that. And again, it's it's not code, but we do agree it's a subdivision this size. It's a good idea, and we have reached out to them and spoke with them.
It presumably make the subdivision more desirable to people looking to buy, right, having a school on site?
Agreed. Agreed.
And I think it looks like there's a large section of behind the property that's maybe is going to be developed in the future. I mean, any thought to, like I said, donating what they said, 10, 15 acres or or not donating, but setting aside, I guess, would be a better term for for the school board to maybe build it, I don't know, elementary, middle school, something there if that's what they want to do.
What I want to say is if we, if an agreement is reached at some point, then there would be a revised preliminary plat, of course. Staff could determine if it was the staff level or coming back in front of this commission. As those discussions and negotiations go on, obviously, it also depends on where at in the process because it's it's hard right now to say exactly where a school site would go within the development. We're talking about a 10-year build-out. If they want to come in in five years, it's a different placement than if they want to need it in 10 years, you know? So it it matters, and that's why the negotiations are prolonged because because they have to also come up with, do we need it now? Do we need it 10 years? And that matters where it goes on this piece of property and how it fits into our overall development.
I I like to-
It's definitely a possibility.
Sorry. I'd like to mention that i- if a school is added to this, I think, and Bob's going to tell me if I'm right or not, the traffic counts that they have are very different than what they-
Well, they are different. Clearly, school generates a lot of traffic in and of itself, both for students and parent pickup and drop-off. So but that's not in, that's not in the in the study that that I could see.
Right, and then, of course, staff would then say, okay, well, we have a, this is a major change. You need to resubmit a new traffic study, and you need to go back in front of the commission. Here we would be. And we'd say, here 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 it all is again, if that ever happened. And so it is not right now. It is still a possibility. We didn't have that finalized, probably will not have it finalized in some time, depending on when they want to come in and what they want to do. So at that time, we'd come back in front of this board again and say, guys, we did work something out. Here it is. Please approve or deny this. Thank you.
I have a question on the petition.
I'm sorry?
I have a question on the petition for me. All right, Derek, so if I heard Neil, the phase one in his traffic study, right, is filing one, two, and 50% of filing three?
I believe that's correct with 213 lots.
213 lots, okay. That's, I was looking, I was going to ask you, what's the number of lots?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, a couple of questions. One, I noticed in the plan here, they asked the question about what is the plan for sewer? And when I read the answer, I don't get an answer as to where the sewage is going to go. And I also don't see anything about potable water. And I'd like to know about both of those, where, what is the sewer question and where's the potable water coming from?
I can answer, I can answer the water. There's actually a water line on site already running along, uh, excuse me for a minute, I think, on the Highway 44 side, there's a water line there. I think it's a 12-inch or something like that, I believe. A 12-inch water line, yes, along that side.
Ascension water?
Yes, along the Pelican Point side. So that's that's handled. As far as sewer is concerned, Mr. Dawson, could you speak for that?
Sure. Um, the sewer is taken care of because we have a project at the Hillary Darrell site. One of the goals for the parish was basically to provide sewer in the parish system. So the Hillary Darrell site has a $5.2 million grant, CDBG grant, that is upgrading that particular site. The goal was always to connect other properties to that particular site. So we've talked to the developer and they've agreed to place the necessary servitude right-ofways for connection to that to that to that plant that we're doing. And it's a, it's it's definitely the direction that we want to head with sewer. Another good thing about that, it will probably be the first sewer plant that would be discharged into the Mississippi River. And so those plans are readily underway. So we feel very confident that this is one of the best situations with sewer that we had in the parish for some time.
Any other comments by the commissioners? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval contingent upon the developers submitting another traffic study at the end of the second phase. And then-
Second filing or second-
Second filing, and then also contingent upon them meeting all of the criteria that the drainage department, that the drainage engineer puts forth.
Do you want to put the impact fees-
Yeah, and also that they would pay the $1,000 impact fee unless unless the parish passes the impact fee and whatever the higher of those two is that they will pay.
And we'll put that on the plat?
Should it be specified on there when the impact fee is paid?
I think they have agreed to pay the $1,000 upfront.
Do they pay it at final plat? Do they pay it with-
They pay the the impact fees for the, if it's $1,000, they pay it at the approval of the final plat. If it's under the ordinance, they pay as per the ordinance, if ordinance is passed before then.
All right.
All right, so I'd like to include Mr. Parenton's language in my motion.
All right, we have a motion?
I'll second it.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, we have a, do we have to have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote going down the line. Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. Chasson?
No.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right, the ayes have it, so the motion passes. Good discussion, gentlemen, thank you. All right, moving on to item number 10. And we have several items under item 10. Public hearing to approve or deny the following subdivision final plat, 10A, The Grove at Ascension, McGlynn Taylor Incorporated.
My name is Ross Berthelot. I'm the developer of The Grove at Ascension. And my engineering staff, I guess, is is with me here today. I've been working with the planning staff with Rhonda, Bob, Lance, Ben, also with O'Neil and Ken for the past week or so, trying to tidy up all of our loose ends, and I think we are there. And so I'm asking for your approval of my final plat.
Thank you. Staff comments?
As far as planning is concerned, the only things missing, there was a sign missing. There's signs that are required for for their park space. That wasn't there when I went. I haven't, I haven't been in a week. A small piece of sidewalk needs to be constructed across a common area, and there was a small shortage of trees that. Ross, have been planted already?
Uh, yes, the sign I just left there this evening, the sign's been placed for the park area, and the trees were planted. The sidewalk's getting done this week where they're permitting.
So I'll go out and check that before we sign and record the final plat, just to make sure it's all right.
So any approval has to be contingent upon getting those things-
Correct.
Squared away. Okay, any other comments from staff, engineering?
I have not sent my memo for approval just because we were still going back and forth. I know that there was an issue with the water lines, I think, at this one. The water lines are in, but there's no water going to them. Is that right, or is that the other one? Which one? I'm sorry, Groves at Ascension. I had the wrong one in front of me. I did get a verbal that everything was done on our checklist from the inspection. As built, I have a hard copy. I just don't have an electronic copy, which I think you guys said y'all were going to get to me tomorrow. I'm okay with that. And then we did ask that they reevaluate something in an already approved drainage plan with some piping. And we, if we can get an agreement on that, we have some emails exchanged, but if we can maybe put that in the contingent that they, they're going to reevaluate possibly constricting that pipe because we're worried about that flow downstream. We want them to relook at it because this was done on a 10-year study, and now we're looking at higher rain events.
Okay. Mr. Bob?
I don't have an issue with traffic on this subdivision.
All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anybody signed up to speak on this? We'll close the public hearing on this. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
It seems like the staff comments are relatively minor, so I'm going to move for approval subject to them. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One more thing. The sewer impact fees that we talked about earlier with Riverton, this subdivision is subject to having to pay those.
And we've discussed that. They they understand that.
I was just made aware of that. With the trending of this agenda, it's not something we discussed at our pre-construction meeting. I'm not happy with it. I think it's the best thing for the parish, and I'm going to work with Ken and O'Neil on on an agreement on that. And obviously, the signature will be withheld until we come to terms with that. One thing I would like to bring up is maybe some sewer offsets, but it's-
We we did those.
Yeah, but y'all are not including the labor to install the plants, which that doesn't make any sense. So I don't know if that's in the ordinance or if somebody can send me the language for that.
Yeah.
But other than that, we're going to work that out.
Okay. Well, that's a, that's a code issue, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, it's it's a fee. We'll work that out.
That has to be addressed.
It's a, it's an offset issue.
Mr. Dumas, you have a, you make your motion.
So I was going to move subject to the developer complying with all the staff requirements.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Dumas. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Christie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Item 10B, Germany Oak Subdivision Quality Engineering and Surveying, Mr. Murphy slash Byrger, or Mr. Murphy.
This this project's basically just like the one you just saw. There's a couple outstanding punch list items. I think there's uh some discussions with with the turn lane. Those are obviously going to be, it'll work out at some point. We're just asking for your approval tonight. Contingent upon working all that out. We got the same issues with the sewer. And we're just here tonight asking y'all to to approve this, contingent upon that, same thing.
Staff?
I think all the comments that I had have been addressed. I have not got word from the subdivision inspectors yet that the punch list items have all been addressed, but I'll talk to them soon enough. I know they were dealing with the ditch issue, the reason why we had recommended to deny it. But Joey's gonna, or Rhonda, is gonna fill y'all in on that. But other than that, the the sewer impact fee being taken care of, and I'll be happy.
From the construction standpoint, we had two items that needed to be resolved. And I think Derek needs to commit and speak to one, but it's, they were constructing a privacy fence basically inside the ditch along the back of property houses. And so our maintenance people said they could not do that. We need to get the, either get the ditch off the fence or get the fence out of the ditch. And I think Derek can speak to that and say whether or not they're going to do that. The other item was on Germany Road itself. We had, it it, as you're aware, it's a very tight road, and we're putting in a left turn lane. And as a result, we're really trying to thread a needle, if you will. And there was some concern about the slopes down to the ditch, the location of the pipes. And I think that the slopes, we worked those out. I think they have constructed slopes to three, three to one are standard. I think we still have an issue with the location of the culverts, and if you don't mind, I'm going to let Joey speak to that. I think he had the last discussion.
Correct. They have some driveway pipes that I informed them that were too close to the roadway in order to uh to to make the the three-to-one slope. They they tried to remedy that different than what I, what I recommended and and what I was, what I instructed that needed to be done. And I'm not acceptable with their their fix to it. So the pipes that they have, this is for driveways that's across from the development that go to driveways, existing driveways that were changed because of the widening needed for that left turn lane. So, you know, if they uh put the pipes where straight pipes in the location that it would take to maintain that three-to-one slope throughout, I'd be okay. They would have to replace the existing pipes that's out there now.
Ms. Rhonda?
And if if both of those things are done, I'd like to see that on the as built because that that's not currently on there. I think that's it.
We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anybody signed up to speak? Go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Murphy, you want to address those issues?
Those items discussed is is engineering-type items we need, we we can need to address. How we address them, it's time to work out with the staff. Obviously, there's a fence in the middle within a drainage servitude that needs to be looked at because per ordinance, you can't have that in there, and so we'll we'll address that. We're asking tonight, again, approval contingent upon working these these items out. The other punch list items, which we did have some, are addressed. And everything from powder mulch and to the signs to the sidewalks, all that has been addressed. The street signs changed out. We have a couple of issues. We're asking for approval tonight, contingent upon working those out, staff. Same recommendation y'all just did on the last, the last final plat.
Any comments by commissioners?
Does that include working out the issues that they had with the pipes and the all that?
If that's what you want to make the motion for, that you can include that that contingency on there, yeah.
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Dumas?
Staff, we also, we also sort of, how do you recommend we address the issue with the trail? Because the trail, there's a part of the trail that was on the preliminary plat that can't be built physically. I don't see how they can build it, and and so they're going to relocate it to another location.
That's another one.
That's another one.
Next project.
Next project, okay. I'm I'm too fast. Okay, sorry.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Just see, there were notes on the plan, just to see if they've been addressed. One was, where is the access to track CA 6, which is common area? Has that been addressed?
Yes, sir. Since this has been printed, I have received another plat with with those things having been addressed.
There is a way to get there.
Sir?
There's a way to get to that common area.
Yes, they provided access, a 10-foot servitude, five foot on each lot from from the street to it.
What about the renaming of Penn Oak Avenue?
It's Laurel Oak Avenue now.
We have changed that, and we've actually, per the punch list, we've actually changed the sign in the in the field as well. That's been handled as well.
Any other comments or questions by commissioners? Do we have a motion?
I'm making the same motion. Approve subject to them addressing all of the staff matters in a satisfactory manner.
Motion by Mr. Dumas?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, the motion passes unanimously. Number 10C was removed from the agenda. Number 10D, Woodland Manor, First Filing, Quality Engineering and Surveying. The tag team, Mr. Byrger is up now. The tag team, Mr. Byrger is up now.
Yes, we ask approval of this final plat. Uh, we believe all punch list items have been addressed. Uh, it's, excuse me, hydrant mulch is missing, we did not achieve hydrant mulching from the stacks to the curb, and our swell ditches are not hydrant mulched.
Staff?
We could talk about the trail now.
Yes, there is a piece of trail, you want me to discuss it, or you gonna handle it, Ben?
You go first.
Okay, um, there's a walking jogging trail, comes off the road, goes around the pond, comes back. But, and we also have a bridge, right before the bridge to the right, it follows a large drainage servitude. I don't know if y'all can see on the plat, but, and it comes up a steep incline about five or six feet right next to two forty-eight, double forty-eight inch drainage culverts. And when the original plat was filed, I think we had this discussion last time, sometimes all the drainage isn't figured out. And when that trail was put there, we didn't realize there were gonna be two forty-eight inch culverts washing this trail away. We felt it didn't make very much sense to put the trail right next to these culverts, and having someone going straight up six feet trying to walk on a trail next to forty-eight inch culverts, double forty-eights. So, we left it out and talked with staff and asked for a different route. And, do we have pictures, Mr. Murphy? It was in the packet. I, I think if you look on the packet, there's, there's this really big live oak tree right by, by the trail. And we're asking, when you walk off of that trail, instead of taking a right to those big double eight, double forty-eight inch culverts, we're asking that you allow us in the second filing to tie in, if you take a left, you'll, the trail will go alongside that large tree and tie into the second filing, instead of tying into the first filing. It is fifty feet shorter, but you don't, it won't get washed out by these far, double forty-eight inch culverts. And it's, it passes through this park right next to this big, pretty live oak tree instead of right next to a drainage servitude and double forty-eight inch culvert. We're asking for y'all to, to approve that change on the plat, the final plat. And we're actually constructing the second filing now, so it's not something that's gonna be down the road, it'll be at the most sixty days from now, we'll, we'll be asking, we'll be tying this trail in.
Any other comments about staff?
If you look in the, the packet, the second photograph is the culverts he's talking about. So, when the preliminary plat came for review and approval, the, the walking trail was shown going basically over where those culverts are now. Obviously, they can't build it there. So the next best answer is to go the way that he's described, if you look on the, the plat in there, where I drew a little line and called it alternative, two hun, two hundred and three feet versus the two hundred and fifty-five that was approved before. That's the next best thing that makes sense. The, the only issue, the only thing I would worry about, there's a small little drainage ditch at the bottom of that whole low area there, and they built a little wooden bridge over it. And they built the bridge to where, yes, the bridge runs down toward the ground, and then there was two or three feet from the base of the bridge to natural ground. And what they did was they pushed a little pile of dirt up to it and built the trail on top of that. The only issue for me would be if that were to wash out, you would be left with a dead end trail. If you look at the plat, you would start walking at lot thirty-five and thirty-six, and you would come all the way around till you got to that spot where they're intersecting, and you get to a dead end, as opposed to what it was before was a loop. So that's the only problem with the alternative that they're offering and a if that bridge were to wash out. But it's up to you guys, if you guys want to okay what they're offering, it'll just be something that goes along with the, with the final plat for the second filing.
So the two hundred and fifty-five, that's what they can't construct?
That's what they cannot construct, they can, but-
Well, we can, but it, it'll wash away, it's-
So it's not gonna be a loop regardless?
It would be ridiculous to build it.
It was, it was gonna be a loop.
But it can't be now.
But it can't be.
I'd also like to make note that on the construction plans, we left it off because when you couldn't build it on those forty-eights, we just didn't come back and get a revised primary plat. So at this point, we're just asking to reroute a piece of the trail.
And I'm not being rude, guys, I'm, I'm trying to, I think I have a picture of the bridge to, to show an illustration of the bridge.
Just one in the packet.
Oh, it's in there, okay.
All right.
We also had the issue of the water line is in, I believe, but water's not there, so I'm not sure how that works. That's just one issue that came up with um, during the ins- inspection.
I might clarify that the water line installation inside the subdivision is correct, in accordance to our specification. The, the water line that we're concerned about is leading to the subdivision, that's off-site water by uh, I guess Baton Rouge water or Ascension water to bring it to it. And so uh, from the standpoint of the subdivision, uh, it's okay, uh, the subdivision's okay, it's the water. Now, it's my understanding, and maybe Lance or Ben speaks to this, but if you approve it, then before you would get a certificate of occupancy for the house, you're gonna have to have water. So the water's on its way, it's just not there yet. There's nothing really that the subdivision can do to hasten that step of bringing the water to them.
We'll open a public hearing on this, does anybody signed up to speak?
Todd Acosta?
Mr. Acosta, just to remind you, you have three minutes.
Five of the residents on the south side, I live at three nine three seven one Coontraff Road, five of the residents on the south side of the road opposed the water line coming through our yard. So the water company thought they were gonna be sneaky and get on the state servitude and run the water line, and between me and the state and some other legal documents from the attorney generals, we found out that the state had no authority to give the water company the right to put the line. So as of today, they still don't have water, two thousand foot of pipe is still not laid. Yesterday, they attempted to put the water on the north side of the road, and the residents, again on that side, held up their hands and stopped them once again. So, until that issue with Baton Rouge water is resolved, uh, it might be a little while for it to get water. So, other items, I'll get off the water. Since we were talking about the drainage tube, drainage servitude and the culverts, I'd like to know, is there drainage servitude along lots fifty-four, seventy-one, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-three, fifteen through eighteen? And if so, that's open and closed ditches with culverts. The open ditches I think you just spoke of were double forty-eights, there's a ton of water that comes off the state highway. Many safety issues with kids getting in that ditch with the water carrying off the highway. And now they have relocated the sewer treatment plant up on the front highway with all the outfall water coming right back through the same ditch, along with rain and drainage and everything else. Entrance turn lane appears to be partially constructed on Mr. Doyle Philippines land. I'd like to ask that someone survey this and make sure exactly where Mr. Doyle Philippines land is, and make sure that they are not encroaching on his ground. Um, along the same lines as the highway department did not give them the permission to construct the turn lane into the subdivision on Mr. Doyle Philippines property. Door, Mr. Doyle Philippines also has the land that is on the far north side. The subdivision is now draining into Mr. Doyle Philippines property and holding water from three inches to a foot or more on Mr. Doyle Philippines property, because all the natural drainages that used to go through this property are now six inches to three foot where the dirt stacked up in front of them, so there's no drainage anymore. And I'd also like to know where the access to the sewage treatment plant is gonna be. There's already, they've already added the, the ru, the driveway off the state highway, and as far as I see, there's no right of way to the sewage treatment plant to be, be serviced.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else signed up? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that. Um, commissioners, any comments, questions?
Can somebody address the drainage issue? That was-
Ms. Rhonda?
Can the engineer address the drainage issue?
First of all, Mr. Acosta is correct in one thing, there's a lot of water that comes from the state highway. We got double forty-eights coming through here, and we're so, we're open ditch up to the lots, we're subsurface through the lots, and we discharge exactly the same place in the uh, outfall ditch that goes to the goodene, exactly where the ditch is or was draining today. Uh, we have a drainage study, we have drainage calculations, they've all been approved through the parish, we are at the final plat stage, this is approved. Uh, as you can see from here, there are, uh, there's a slew on the backside of lots thirty through thirty-seven, that is natural. That is where this area drains to, it drains through there, it's always going to remain natural, this is gonna be part of the final plat. This is a sixty acre tract, and we're gonna have, I think somewhere around twenty acres that's gonna remain undeveloped. If I'm not mistaken, that could be, but that's pretty much, as far as the treatment plant, uh, sewer, if you look at the construction plans, you will see that we actually have a pump station on the sewer treatment plant that goes into the subsurface system that goes into the drainage pond that discharges into the slew. So it's got tertiary and additional treatment treating it even further, so it just doesn't just go out into the ditch. Uh, the access for the, for the sewer treatment plant is off of Grandwood Avenue. Uh, it was actually poured today, the apron, that was one of our punch list items. Uh, and it will not have access onto Coontraff Road. The uh, I don't know what all lots he said, but you can see on here, there are drainage servitudes throughout this project per what we needed for the construction plans. Uh, as far as the off-site wa, as far as the on-site water, everything is in per code, or, or is installed per Ascension water. Offsite, I'm still being told as late as today that Ascension Water is proceeding and under construction and will be to us within a couple weeks. Uh, that's, that's as faster than any house can be built. Uh, so, I, I'm not sure of that, I do know they had some issues, they've worked through those issues and they're progressing. And that's what I'm being told by Ascension Water, other than that, I have, have no, no knowledge of that. Uh, so, again, I'm asking for the same motion y'all just made, we do have a couple outstanding issues. Uh, they're very minor, in my opinion, hydrant mulch, didn't get there, we got a bunch of rain coming, just didn't want it to wash down the drain today, or yesterday. So uh, we're just asking tonight for the same exact motion y'all just made again, and we think that this is gonna be resolved very quickly.
As the issue with the-
And the trail, yeah.
The issue with the wooden rails not being up to code, has that been?
Well, it, it's, it's not a code issue, what happens is, we got, we got some uh, some dirt there, um, you know, there's talking about washout issue, we do have some, some dirt we packed in there, we actually, uh, you know, the bridge wasn't required as part of our plan, we did that because we were afraid of, of possible washout uh, coming from the double forty-eight culvert, so we, we took it upon ourselves to build the bridge, we, we had discussed it with staff. Uh, some, uh, to prevent the washout, because there was a ditch there, there was, there was a slew that all this water off the highway drains through. So we built the bridge, and uh, to try to make it nicer.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, that's not, the, it's listed here as number one, something about section seventeen forty twenty G, that the rails of the bridge were not up to code.
Oh, you're talking about the one by fours, yes, those have all been scabbed, and I think uh, staff can tell you today, they walked it, and they're fine with that.
That has been addressed.
Any other comments by commissioners? Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'm gonna attempt to write the mo, to make a motion.
Okay.
So, we're gonna move to amend the trail on the preliminary plat to match the trail in the final plat, correct? That's one, one, one required approval. Well, Neil, does that need to be separate than the rest of it?
No.
No, okay. So we're, so I'm gonna move to approve the amended trail in the final plat. Uh, subject to addressing all of the staff comments. And uh, Derek, I'm gonna ask you to grade the foot of that bridge a little bit better than that, that's, that's just a steep slope off of that dirt, so if you could just dress that up a little bit better, that'd be great. So I'm gonna ask planning if you could look at that and make sure that it's, get dressed up with a, a more gentler slope, so it's not washout.
Yeah, if he calls me or emails me when it's done, I'll go check.
Just to, I think you just need to dress it up a little bit, that's all. Okay.
All right, we have a motion, Mr., by Mr. Dumas, uh, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Moving on to item eleven, an ordinance, um, on the ordinances. Oh, Mr. Cagnolati, yes, sir. Councilman John Cagnolati wishes to speak to us.
Thanks for recognizing me, I have to run, I just wanted to, and I'm sorry I'm late, uh, got held up in traffic, go figure, right? I just wanted, on behalf of my district and uh, the other council members who couldn't be here tonight, I wanna welcome you, thank you for your service. It's not gonna be an easy task, but uh, we're here to support you, and uh, just wanna extend my thanks for you volunteering, and uh, look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cagnolati, appreciate that. Moving on to number, item eleven, ordinances, public hearing to recommend the approval or denial to the parish council amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code A, ordinance DR sixteen dash zero five revisions to the drainage regulations in the Unified Land Development Code pertaining to Drainage Impact Study Modeling Event. Ms. Rhonda, you wanna speak to us, since many of us, many are, were not here last time when we put this on the agenda for a public hearing?
Yes, I'll, this amendment is just to clarify a problem, our inconsistencies we currently have in the ordinance, and it's just to remove one line and replace it. Um, so, it's a clarification about a twenty-five year study, which before had said to follow policy, and I've taken out the policy wording and, and basically said what we include in the policy. So this should make it easier to follow the ordinances.
All right. Uh, this is a, this is an agenda item, Mr. Bishop and I were here, I think in February, when we put this on for a public hearing, a lot of y'all were not here. I don't know, um, if this is something y'all wanna look at and, and move the public hearing to next month so y'all can look at it, or if y'all ready to move forward on it, um, or if you have any questions, but you certainly ask any questions or comments.
I'm ready to move forward.
Same here.
Uh, that being said, do we have a motion, do we have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion that we adopt this revision.
Moved by Mr. Dudley, se, any second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Bishop, um, Mr. Dumas has stepped out for just a second.
You can vote, if y'all, you can vote if you-
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the, um, the motion passes to recommend this amendment to the parish council. All right, uh, number, item number twelve, staff report?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mr. Brock, terse and brief, engineering staff?
Um, yeah, I'll just do a quick update, currently we have fifteen subdivisions in infrastructure, we just approved three more, so that'll be eighteen. We have eight subdivisions, um, in, I'm sorry, um, in review. Ten subdivisions in preliminary review, and five, um, that are, uh, that, we've had pre-application meetings, but they haven't come forward. And we have about forty-four, give or take, commercial developments that are ongoing.
Thank you, Ms. Rhonda, all right. Item number thirteen on the agenda, uh, motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Chasson, hearing no opposition, we are adjourn- Motion by Mr. Chasson. Hearing no opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.